All right, good afternoon, everyone. We have a regular meeting of the City Council of the City of Cape May. We are here in the Cape May City Hall Auditorium. Today is Tuesday, July 1st, 2025. The time is now five past 3:00 PM. Please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Under the Open Public Meetings Law, notice of this meeting was sent to the Cape May County Herald and the press of Atlantic City. Copy of the agenda was delivered to each member of City Council, posted on the city website, and City Hall Bulletin Board. Notice is hereby provided that Cape May City Council meetings are audio recorded and/or video streamed live. Live video streams are posted to the Cape May City website. City of Cape May is not responsible if audio recording or live video streaming of a meeting is unavailable. Roll call. Councilmember Baldwin?
Here.
Councilmember Bodnar?
Here.
Deputy Mayor McDade?
Here.
Councilmember Meyer is absent. Mayor Mullock?
Here.
City Solicitor Gillen Schwartz?
Here.
City Manager Dietrich?
Here.
Deputy Manager Riggs?
Here.
Deputy Clerk Turner?
Here.
Any additions or deletions tonight, council?
Anything, council?
Mm-mm.
No?
Right, going on to the presentation of the new police headquarters.
Rob, John, welcome. Thank you very much for coming.
Thank you for having us.
So, Rob and John, you can introduce yourselves, but for the architects on the police station building.
I'm Rob Connolly from Robbie Connolly Architect.
Mr. Connolly, could you turn that on and speak into it for me, please? Thank you. Lift it on up, it moves. You're good. Thank you.
I'm Rob Connolly from Robbie Connolly Architect. The architects on the police station.
And John Duscano from Robbie Connolly Architect.
Thank you for joining us.
Thank you. Paul, do you want to take it away?
Yeah, we're finally here, everyone. It's been a long journey to get to this point. You know, Rob and John have been working with Vince Orlando with EDA for the site engineer's side of it. He unfortunately couldn't be here tonight, but we can go over that. I can probably cover most of the site plan issues. The task force, we have several of the task force members here with us today that have worked for several years. And, you know, we're kind of finally here, ready to, you know, present the final plans, and I think we're ready to go out to bid for this project. What we're hoping to do is, with authorization this evening, to go out to bid on July 23rd, have the bids due back on September 10th, which then would align us for an award back here at the council meeting on September 16th. And in talking to Rob, that would kind of gear us in for a early October, mid-October groundbreaking and get started for construction. So I do have the plans up here if we, if Rob wants to kind of, we can briefly discuss. I mean, I think I'll go back to the site plan. You know, it's generally located at the corner of St. John and Lafayette. You know, this, this plan and layout has kind of remained pretty similar. The orientation of the driveway coming in and some of the parking stalls have changed slightly probably from one of the initial draft that may have been seen by the public. But it accommodates all of the different site features and issues that we've come up with as far as grading, as far as, I call it, the bathtub and the remediation that we have to stay away from on the former JCPN site. We've also, it'll have landscaping along both sides. We'll have the gas lamps, the electrified gas lamps, similar to what's on the Washington Street Mall, along St. John and Lafayette. We'll have fence to kind of block the parking lot from the neighbors across the street. And, you know, that's generally the site itself. And then I'll let the architects kind of go over the, I'll say, the important part of the project that we're really here to talk about, and that's the police headquarters building.
Okay. Well, thank you, Paul. As you can see, the building that we have up there, the bottom left-hand corner is what we call the front of the building. That's going to be facing Lafayette Street with the entrance on the corner. The building is made out of masonry. The outside will be brick. The mancered roof will be faux shingles. And all of the windows that we're using and doors that we're using on the building are pretty much the same ones that we used on the firehouse. And we're also using the same exact color brick that was used on the firehouse. The bottom course of brick is a utility brick, which is a little bit bigger. And then we're going to have a ledge on top of that, and then the normal-sized brick. And then there's an access band going across, and that will actually be a black, dark gray, the black brick as an accent color. And underneath of each one of those little bump-out windows there, we also have a change in the brick pattern, which was one of the things that was requested by Historic Preservation. And so we're doing that with the brick, just to make the building not look so plain and blank, and to give it a little bit more depth to the design. Also, the overhead doors on the street side, on St. John's street side, are going to be, to look like cottage doors, as opposed to regular overhead doors. If we wanted to take a look at the back, Paul, the back of the building, there we have regular roll-up doors, and since they're not facing the street, they're just going to look a little bit more utilitarian, and they're going to be black to match all the windows and the other doors on the project. And then along the park side is the same thing with the brick, which is the top right-hand side there. That will be similar to the other side with the stripe going across, the accent bricks and the two different color, or two different sizes of brick. And we also have a soldier course over top of the windows, just to make it look like a natural brick building. So... And then on the inside of the building, like I said, the entrance is on the corner of Lafayette and St. John. We'll have a lobby there. And the first floor is pretty much the processing area and the sort of public area in the front. And then the back is the processing and the area that's separated for the clients that will come in, as the chief likes to call them. And then in the middle of that is where all the patrolmen will be located. And then as you go up the building, on the second floor is the detectives, the lockers, showers, those sort of things. And the third floor is more of the command staff. And on the rear of the third floor is an opened patio area, an observation deck, where the chief will be able to have community get-togethers and whatnot out there, and also observe over the park and the city. I think that's about all for now.
Rob, would you mind, is the chief here? I'm sorry, I can't see it back there. Chief, would you mind giving us a quick overview of what you think, you know, from the interior perspective, what you can talk about and what you'd like to?
Yeah, absolutely. First and foremost, thank you all for inviting me here. This process has been long and arduous. However, it's been better fitted with council like yourselves, Mayor yourself, city manager as well, and Robbie, and John Duscano, and my team. I couldn't do it without these guys, the men and women of the Cape May Police Department. So with that said, this is a state-of-the-art building, in my opinion, with the outside fitting the surroundings of Cape May City. The Historic Preservation Committee was, they worked very closely with us with this project. There were some that said, hey, it's too big, it's too massive. But we packed everything we could into these three floors, two and a half floors, basically. We currently are in two buildings. We're separated by a few, a mile or so here, between West Cape May and Cape May City. Everyone knows my stake here. I'm Italian, and I like to have my family together. This brings it together. First floor, like Robbie said, is the working group. That's where clients will come in, and they'll be attended to if they're under arrest, and so forth. We have that indoor Sally Port that you can pull in, keeping the business and keeping everybody's business off the street. We can get them in, get them safely off the street, deal with them, and bring them in through that portion of the building. We can house our golf cart in there, our bike storage for the, for the back end, for our summer officers as well. Walking them through that side of the building, interview rooms along that first floor. We have a domestic violence room for those that have any conflict there. It'd be a nice area for them to be seated in. And also in the front of the building, with that lobby, we have a greeting area. It's kind of informal now with the way we have it set up here, and it's sometimes has interrupted council meetings. We're dealing with someone in the hallway, so we were allowed to make a little room off of the lobby that we can bring someone in, discuss their problem or issue privately, and then bring them out and sit them in the lobby while we attend to their business. There's two elevator, or one elevator in this building, two staircases that lead us up into the third, the second floor, which is our break room. We have a properly-sized break room, kitchen for the officers, and staff to cook meals and kind of, you know, break bread, per se. Down the hallway there, we have our armory, we have our evidence collection area, where we can properly process our evidence and make sure that it's bagged and tagged correctly. We're using some state-of-the-art evidence collection systems in there to move forward. The detectives are on that floor as well. Moving backwards, you have the locker rooms on that second floor and a fitness area. So we'll have a gym area for the officers to maintain their physical capabilities. Moving up to the third floor, like Robbie said, the admin side of the house and some storage for the chief's office, lieutenant's captain, my admin secretary will be housed. A very narrow building, 42 feet wide by 137-ish, but everything we need is packed into that building, and this is a longstanding building that should be here. And I did forget, my building task force, without those gentlemen and Ms. McDade as well, stepping into the arena a few years ago, we wouldn't be here. Their past knowledge of police service and working group, Mr. Elwell's here, and Big John over there. So we have Jake, pardon me, a lot of, a lot of knowledge base coming into this building. It wasn't just me, Deacon, saying, hey, this is what we're going to do, or the crew behind me here, Lieutenant Walker, Mazza, and Captain Bobic. We just kind of took everybody's collective opinions, yourselves included, and also the city and the residents, to make sure that this building was right and that it fit. It's big, but it fits to the entrance to Cape May when you come in. This is the first big building you'll see before you get to the fire department, and I think it's very fitting for the area.
Thank you very much, chief.
You're welcome.
Any questions, City Council? Long time coming. I just want to thank especially our task force members here, former mayor-
I just want to thank especially our task force members here, former mayor Bob Elwell and former North Wildwood Police Chief and HPC member Jake Stevenson. Thank you for all your work on the task force. As Chief mentioned, there was a lot of people involved in this whole group and trying to get it together. And I think we all agree it's been a long time coming, but I also want to thank our solicitor in regards to that long time coming, because always, the legal stuff always seems to take the longest. But no, without you, Mr. Gillensworth, it wouldn't have, it was like a bowl of spaghetti that you had to unscramble.
Oh, alphabet's written.
Yeah, oh my gosh. Just to remind the public, this, this area included JCPN, Jersey Central Power and Light. It included the EPA, the New Jersey DEP, the State Historic Preservation Office, obviously our own HPC, which we valued very much, and obviously had an HPC member as part of it. Warren Copeland, former chair of the HPC, also looked at this plan extensively, especially in the beginning. It, of course, involved the school board, the county, county had a piece, the housing authority, HUD, and had, involved housing and urban development. So it just had every acronym that you can come up with, but work through each detail. And finally, too, in regards to the land diversion, which was the key kind of nearly final piece, was basically trading .14 acres, so a very small parcel, for six, almost seven acres, even maybe a little bit more by the end.
6.9.
6.9, something like that, at the Soul Track. So as an aside from the police station itself, you know, preserved a ton of valuable and environmentally sensitive property at the Soul Track, to have a location that really worked for West Cape May, of course, all of the different directions in the city, Cape May Point, et cetera. But anyway, I just want to thank all the folks that were involved in the process to get us to this point. And hopefully we get this out to bid and get some good numbers and move it, move it right along. Any questions or comments, Council? John, Rob, thank you so very much, we appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, great work. Thank you.
Appreciate the opportunity.
Happy Fourth. Yep. Okay, on to updates and old business, city manager.
Well, we're kicked off for summer. Summer's definitely here with all the heat and everything. At the next meeting, I hope to be able to have a full report on where we start preliminarily with some of our parking beach tag revenues and give a full report of that after we kind of get through the Fourth of July weekend and have a better grasp on where we stand with that. So at that meeting, I'll be able to give a good full report on where we stand up to date for that. But all the departments are kind of geared up, ready for the holiday weekend, and the weather's definitely bringing everybody into town, so I just hope everybody is safe for the weekend and enjoys what Cape May has to offer. So thank you.
Thank you, city manager. City solicitor?
Nothing tonight, Mayor, thank you.
Okay, city council, any updates or old business? On to ordinances for introduction.
Yes, Council, we have 573-2025, an ordinance authorizing a lease agreement with Mid-Atlantic Center for the Arts, Inc., MAC, for a portion of the Welcome Center.
Do I have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Any questions or comments? Roll call.
Deputy Mayor McDade?
Yes.
Councilmember Bodnar?
Yes.
Councilmember Baldwin?
Yes.
Mayor Mullick?
Yes.
Moving on to ordinances for second reading and consideration for adoption, we have 562-2025, an ordinance amending section 368-2 of the city code regarding prohibited conduct in park and recreation areas to prohibit dogs on the nature trails at Lafayette Street Park. And there is a public hearing tonight, Mayor.
Is anyone here wishing to speak on ordinance 562? 562? Said a few words at the last one. Okay, do I have a motion? We'll close public comment on that ordinance. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Any questions or comments? Roll call.
Deputy Mayor McDade?
Yes.
Councilmember Bodnar?
Yes.
Councilmember Baldwin?
Yes.
Mayor Mullick?
Yes.
563-2025, an ordinance providing minimum parking limitations and regulations for all vehicles in the city of Cape May with a public hearing.
Is anyone here wishing to speak on ordinance 563? Seeing no one, we'll close public comment. Do I have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Any questions or comments, Council? Roll call.
Deputy Mayor McDade?
Yes.
Councilmember Bodnar?
Yes.
Councilmember Baldwin?
Yes.
Mayor Mullick?
Yes.
564-2025, bond ordinance providing for various water sewer utility improvements, buying in the city of Cape May, county of Cape May, state of New Jersey, appropriating $2,335,000 therefore, and authorizing the issuance of $2,355,000 bonds or notes of the city to finance the costs thereof.
Is anyone here wishing to speak on 564? Ordinance 564, Mr. Roush?
Joel Roush, 1010 New York Avenue. Really, it's a combination of the next three ordinances. Will, has there been a projected date when the city is going to advertise for the bond
No. Kevin's still looking at that, and I don't, I think it'll be later this fall if, at any time. I don't think that we're ready to do one at this moment for a full bond sale.
So then I assume that the total amount of the bond sale is also unknown? I mean, we've got roughly $9 million in?
Yeah, these are all vans, these are all, will be all financed through temporary financing. As we, you know, don't, remember, these are just setting up the budgetary accounts to do the projects, you know, until, like, the, I mean, the water tower, like, we're discussing now is the water sewer bond, which includes the water tower painting. We still have to go out, prepare the final plans, inspect for that, put that out to bid and do that. So that project hasn't even been put out to bid to know what the final number is, so you wouldn't encumber that into a final bond until the project has been awarded. So that might not be put into permanent financing until the bond we do in 2027.
So can I assume then we'll be, we'll be using some bond anticipation notes?
Yes. Yes. For all of these projects, for all these, for the next three bonds, yes, we'll be using bond anticipation notes as they become up for construction and moving forward.
I assumed that. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else on 564? And you know what, I'm, because they're all very similar, let's open it up for 565 and 566. Any of the bond ordinances here, public comment?
My comment is referencing bond 566. It's the bond ordinance providing for various capital improvements for $4,620,000. My question, or my comment, has to do with the police department, let me see, let me start with the police department. I think it's a fire department, $100,000 for equipment with a five-year use life. Again, you know, I've been up here before talking about the fact that equipment that only has a five-year use life should be put into their expenses that they pay for on a yearly basis. We shouldn't go be, going out for a 20-year bond for equipment that only lasts for five years, and we'll be paying for that with all that interest. That's, you know, proper management of your department, and that should be looked at in that. And that also goes for the police with their equipment with a five-year lifespan also. You know, these are things that should not be bonded for. These are things that, if they're needed, they should be put into the budget and budgeted accordingly.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Okay. Do I have a, we, do I have a motion on 564? That's actually a question.
We do not yet.
Do I have a motion? Can I get a motion?
I'll make the motion on 564.
Can I have a second, please?
I'll second.
Any questions or comments? Roll call.
Deputy Mayor McDade?
Yes.
Councilmember Bodnar?
Yes.
Councilmember Baldwin?
Yes.
Mayor Mullick?
Yes.
And 565-2025, bond ordinance providing for various beach utility improvements, buying in the city of Cape May, county of Cape May, state of New Jersey, appropriating $2,000,000 therefore, and authorizing the issuance of $2,000,000 bonds or notes of the city to finance the costs thereof.
With a public hearing, but we technically?
As a point of order, should I just open this up for public comment again? Anyone wishing to speak on 565, just to stay in order? Seeing none, we'll close public comment. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Any questions or comments? Roll call.
Deputy Mayor McDade?
Yes.
Councilmember Bodnar?
Yes.
Councilmember Baldwin?
Yes.
Mayor Mullick?
Yes.
And 566-2025, bond ordinance providing for various 2025 capital improvements, buying in the city of Cape May, county of Cape May, state of New Jersey, appropriating $4,620,000 therefore, and authorizing the issuance of $4,400,000 bonds or notes of the city to finance part of the costs thereof.
Does anyone wish to make further comment on 566, ordinance 566? Seeing none, we'll close public comment. Do I have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Any questions or comments? Roll call.
Deputy Mayor McDade?
Yes.
Councilmember Bodnar?
Yes.
Councilmember Baldwin?
Yes.
Mayor Mullick?
Yes.
Moving on to public portions on the resolutions only.
Is anyone here wishing to speak on resolutions this evening, this afternoon? Any resolution comments?
Actually, if, let's go and ask.
Sure.
Remove 223 and 224.
Absolutely.
From the consent agenda.
Anything else to remove from the consent, Council?
Anything, Council? No?
Okay. We're good with the public? All right. Do we have a motion then to adopt the consent agenda minus 223 and 224?
Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Roll call.
Deputy Mayor McDade?
Yes.
Councilmember Bodnar?
Yes.
Councilmember Baldwin?
Yes.
Mayor Mullick?
Yes.
All right, we have 223-07-2025, resolution of the city council of the city of Cape May endorsing a fourth-round housing element and fair share plan.
Okay, so the reason I just asked these?
Let's just make a motion.
Motion, I'll second.
Can I have a motion on that resolution?
I'll make a motion.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Go ahead. Thank you, sorry. The reason I asked that those be removed, I just had some, some comments that I just wanted to make about, about them. So, look, all communities are required to have an affordable housing plan to address affordable housing in their communities. And the way that, the way those plans are structured is, well, there's a funding structure for affordable housing, and Cape May has accumulated, I believe it's just about $2.7 million in a dedicated trust fund for affordable housing. And our spending plan does address this, but I just want to reinforce the notion that the city should do all that it can to work with the Cape May Housing Authority when it comes to issues regarding affordable housing. I mean, a segment of our community lives in housing that's overseen by the Cape May Housing Authority. And many of those homes, we don't have a lot of families, you know, in Cape May. We certainly don't have a lot of families that have children living in Cape May full-time. But a lot of the families that we do have in Cape May are living in housing, authority housing. You know, you go down Lafayette Street, you go on Broad Street Corp., it's evident that the housing that is located there is in need of rehabilitation. And by way of how affordable housing works, rehabbing those units would go towards satisfying Cape May's affordable housing obligations. I note that, you know, and while I'm suggesting and asking that we work with the Cape May Housing Authority, it's clear that that's what the city's intent is doing by specifically mentioning in our, in the spending plan that monies will be used if the city agrees to move forward with gut rehabilitation and deed restricting existing units owned by the Cape May Housing Authority as affordable housing units, or agrees to create new affordable housing units with the Cape May Housing Authority or a selected developer. So it's, this is going to be a work in progress. It doesn't happen, it doesn't happen quickly. There is going, I'm sure this is going to be a, unfortunately, it becomes a protracted exercise in working out issues of affordable housing. But I, you know, to me, what I see is a commitment with, from the city to work in that direction and try to make this come to fruition for, and make things better for a segment that's already existing in our community, not just doing what we are legally obligated to do, but also living up to a civic duty as well. So, thank you.
I agree. Thank you, Councilman Bodnar. Any other questions or comments on resolution 223?
Mayor? If I may, I just want to make a brief comment on this process. We're, and to Councilman Bodnar's point, we're under an artificial deadline under the new statutory framework, so a lot of this, these plans and the spending plan have to be adopted on a strict timeline. But what I think a lot of the professional staff sees as the benefit of this is there's some flexibility to account for opportunities in the future, and that was critical to the planning process. And I want to thank Mr. Hurlis for his institutional knowledge in generating this. It's a lot of work to put this together. It's a lot, really helpful when you have someone who has that much of collective memory to attack. And when I say attack, I mean, attack the problem and make sure you have a plan. But the city is, I think, in a very good position, even under this new statute, that a lot of towns are trying to figure out and navigate, but the city is, I think, uniquely situated and has a good strategy to, you know, deal with this issue and the flexibility, I think, to evaluate those opportunities in the future. So I just wanted to point that out. There's a lot of work that's been done, a lot of work to be done, and we'll have to navigate through that process. But I think from my perspective, the city's in a very good position under this new regulation.
I wanted to just echo what Mr. Gillensworth said about Mr. Hurlis putting together. The planning board had an opportunity for him to provide us with an overview and really was able to drill this down to, I would say, in the simplest of terms, on a very complex subject. And was able to, I think, give the planning board an understanding of how a complex requirement under the law will fit into and how the city of Cape May will be able to move this forward. And, you know, having listened through that presentation, at the end of it, I felt like I understood exactly where we, you know, stood for the first time, to be perfectly honest. In the past, it's been somewhat confusing. And he took us through each of the rounds, where our obligations were, where our future obligations were, and made it, quite frankly, a difficult subject, very easy to understand. So, thank you, Mr. Hurlis. I know it was a lot of time, and you are under the gun to get it done, under the wire, so.
Thank you, Mr. Hurlis, really, and I appreciate, how many pages was it? 30? 60?
Yeah.
Please, Mr. Hurlis, yeah.
Thank you, thank you very much. Once again, this is the third?
Is that, is your microphone on just so?
Yeah, it's on green, so. This is the third affordable housing plan and housing element that I've worked on, on behalf of the city. The city has been very proactive in addressing their affordable housing, dating back for the last three rounds. Once again, in 2024, our beloved government said, we're going to change the rules again and create this new timeline. And that's why we're pressed to come up with this plan in such a hurry. And the plan that I prepared gives the city the flexibility of addressing affordable housing with the housing authority. The housing authority was brought into this process during our last reexamination. Six years ago, we recognized, hey, we got another round coming, they're looking to rehabilitate those units, those units are over 50 years old, it's about time that that's happened, and this gives us a great opportunity for the city to satisfy their affordable housing obligations as well as addressing their housing stock needs. So I think it's, it's been a great process, and I know that we're going to be coming to some type of solution and agreement in the future. Recognize that the plan can change. As projects come and go, the spending plan can be revised, and the affordable housing plan can be revised through that 10-year period. Because this is a 10-year, this is forecasting our affordable housing needs through the next 10 years, from 2025 to 2035. So it gives us flexibility, recognize that plans evolve and that we may need to revisit this at a later date. But, and I thank everyone from the city, the mayor. But, and I thank everyone from the city, the mayor, Mr. Bodnar, Chris Gillensworth, your Affordable Housing Council, Eric Nolan, all of your staff that has helped me prepare these plans. But I think we have a good plan. It's not a great departure. There's not huge mechanism changes. But we're evolving our plan to meet the needs of affordable housing within Cape May.
Thank you very much, Mr. Hurlis.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. I'm going to go to public comment just right now, so let us just stay in order, if that's all right. So we have a motion and a second on 232, is that correct?
223, yes.
I'm sorry, 223, sorry.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, okay. So we have a motion and a second. Roll call.
Deputy Mayor McDade?
Yes.
Councilmember Bodnar?
Yes.
Councilmember Baldwin?
Yes.
Mayor Mullick?
Yes.
And we have 224-07-2025, resolution of the City Council of the city of Cape May approving a fourth-round Affordable Housing Trust Fund spending plan and requesting program and court approval of the spending plan.
Do I have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Do I have a second?
I'll.
Any questions or comments? Roll call.
Deputy Mayor McDade?
Yes.
Councilmember Bodnar?
Yes.
Councilmember Baldwin?
Yes.
Mayor Mullick?
Yes.
Okay.
New business? City solicitor?
Nothing tonight, mayor, thank you.
City manager?
Nothing.
City clerk?
Just a few. A reminder that city offices will be closed this Friday on the Fourth of July for Independence Day. And to that end, I have our lineup of events for the weekend. On Friday, Saturday, Sunday, and Monday at 7:00 PM, there will be free concerts in Rotary Park. We have, the fireworks display will be on the Fourth of July at 9:30 PM from a barge at sea in front of Congress Hall. The rain date is scheduled for July 6th, and that will be announced via social media if necessary. And there is our annual Independence Day Parade on Saturday, July 5th at 1:00 PM, with the rain date of the 6th of July. Lineup is at noon at New Jersey and Philly Avenues. They're doing a best decorated contest, so wear your red, white, and blue. There'll be prizes given out. So give a call if you have any questions on that. We encourage your participation. Councils too.
Thank you.
That's it.
Okay. Councilmember Baldwin?
Just a couple of things, mayor. Just a big shout out to everybody, DPW, all of the departments. The city looks great. And it really has been a great start to the, to the summer. And then the second thing, there's going to be a walk and talk on the mats out behind Convention Hall with the clerk's office and myself. And it's going to be like an open talk. Anything that's going on, anything from the clerk's office. So if anybody can make it, that would be great.
That's great.
Thank you.
Nice, okay. Councilman Bodnar?
I'd like to commend the Cape May City Police Department for their investigation that resulted in the arrest of six individuals for the 2024 smash-and-grab burglary of one of our local businesses. From my experience as a county prosecutor, I tell you, these are difficult cases to investigate and very difficult cases to solve. It requires perseverance. It provides, it requires a great degree of technical skill and proficiency. And in this case, it resulted in the arrest of six individuals. Those six people, they're not from New Jersey. They're not from Cape May County. So this is, and this is a case that's going to be prosecuted federally, I would add, as well. So I know each season gives different challenges to our police department from a, from a need standpoint. You know, a lot of the work that gets involved is community policing. We were a quiet town, quieter town in the winter, and we're a very, very busy town right now and throughout the summer. And our police department, whether it's community policing or, in this instance, demonstrating a need for the proficiency that you see in investigation, shows that we have, you know, we have a talented group of people. We really have a talented group of police officers, and we're very fortunate to have them. So I want to thank you for the work that you do each and every day. But I congratulate you on bringing this investigation to a successful point where these people are going to be arrested and are going to be prosecuted. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bodnar. Deputy Mayor?
Shout out to Captain Back. They have a fully-staffed lifeguard crew, so all the beaches are opened. I think that's probably a first time in a long time, so.
That's great.
Yeah, he's, he was really very happy, very pleased. A lot of legacy recruits. So I think that bodes well for future. On a not-so-happy note, I just wanted to mention, thinking of the firefighters and EMTs after the incident, the horrific incident in Idaho with the ambush of the firefighters. You know, just thoughts and prayers out to all firefighters throughout the country. I'm sure that it's shaken. I reached out to Alex and Mike this morning. But, you know, just not something anyone would anticipate or expect, thankfully. You know, we've never had a situation like that, but it certainly gives reason for pause when something like that, that's never happened before, to that group of individuals. So thoughts and prayers to everyone out there.
Thank you. I just want to thank again Rob and John. Been a lot of work to get to this point, so thank you very much. And again, our Police Station Task Force members, thank you very much. But most of all, I want to thank the police department for, not just your professionalism, but your patience in getting this going, and we appreciate it. So Chief, thank you, thank you very much. I guess we have a little bit of a theme tonight, but really, I appreciate all of your hard work to get to this point. So thank, thank you very much. And just happy Fourth of July to everybody. Have a wonderful, safe weekend. With that, we'll open it up to the public. Anyone wishing to speak, please come to the microphone, state your name and address.
Mayor, just real quick, before we go into that, I just want to recognize Resolution 232, which is John Thomas, the school business administrator over in Cape May, West Cape May. Unfortunately, he was unable to make it this evening, but we're going to mail him the resolution and a key to the city because he really worked diligently with the city on various projects and wish him congratulations in retirement.
Yeah, congratulations, Johnny. Excellent, excellent person to deal with, so we thank you very much. Mr., go ahead, sir. Yep.
Good afternoon. Gary Snyder, 105 First Avenue, resident of Cape May. And uplifting meeting here, folks. I want to say that in public government, and at least in my experience, there aren't enough of accolades. And I congratulate you all on the successes. It's really good to hear. And I think I spent too many years doing infrastructure-related, city-management-related items. And I, I, I buy hats off to the mayor of the council, certainly the city manager, engineer, who's the boots on the ground and gets a lot of these infrastructure and community-related projects done. So I thank you for that, and again, commend you. I'm here as a concerned citizen to express some hesitation about the proposed West Cape May pedestrian bridge on First Ave. And I know it's a long way off, but now is the time for, I think, the residents in the area, myself, who I'm speaking for, and some other concerned residents in the community, in the Cove community, that see, that just question where we are on this. It, it's an important part of the greater program for looking at, obviously, pedestrian and bike safety, which is a critical need. And again, I applaud the efforts there. Safety's paramount, there's no question. But when, when I and some others have stepped back to look at this project, we've asked ourselves, is this really the, the best option? Is it the safest pedestrian off, option? Is it the safest bicycle option? Does it have impacts relative to some of the other alternatives? From what I understand in the report, at least from what I read, I don't think the pedestrian bridge has actually been a reviewed alternative in the formal study. So again, I would question the process or the method of looking at, you know, cost-benefit analysis. But safety's paramount, no question. There are environmental impacts with this option that we can't overlook, whether that be flora, fauna, endangered species, filling wetlands, the water quality in Cape Island Creek as it enters, nature conservancies, South Meadows, and I could go on but won't here, it's not the forum. And again, I think fiscal responsibility, you know, cost-benefit analysis. When we've all spent too much time in our careers looking at projects and trying to pick the best one, and cost and benefit is certainly one way to do that. Again, I don't think this was analyzed, the bridge itself wasn't analyzed like some of the other options. But when I step back and objectively look at it, again, don't not, I don't have all the information. There's significant costs here. Maybe funding that doesn't directly come out of either West Cape May or the city of Cape May's budget, but there are significant costs, and there are, there are some benefits, no doubt. Are they benefits that are better than some of the less costly alternatives? Perhaps not. There are dis-benefits, and again, some of these impacts. So I don't want to spend much time on it tonight, but again, I wanted to bring this concern to the council. I reached out to Councilman Bodnar just before the meeting. We're going to set up some time to talk, maybe get together with the greater community. You will probably hear more from the Cove community residents over the next several weeks, months, what have you. I know there's a contingent on the other side of the canal that's talked a lot, a lot with Deck about his bridge, if you will, and have expressed their concerns. So again, concerns all around. It may be a very good project. It may be a real winner. It may not be. But, you know, the worst project in the world is the one that people don't understand. And at this point, in the city of Cape May, and I'll speak for the area down by the Cove, it's not understood. So again, I ask your indulgence here to be patient with us, to, you know, reach out to the community, make us aware. And again, maybe this will be a great project, or maybe it gets modified in some way or fashion. So again, I thank you for your time, and I appreciate your interest.
Thank you very much.
Drills Rouse, 1010 New York Avenue. I believe I'm correct in saying this, and Mr. Hurlis could may want to comment, that the, the housing needs of the city are very well-known. But my understanding is, going forward, the financial obligation of the city of Cape May is really not at issue. And I'm assuming that's correct.
I didn't, I didn't hear you, but not what, not an issue, is that what you said?
The financial obligation from the taxpayers of the city is not really relevant to the improvements that are coming forth for the housing authority.
I don't, I don't think that's necessarily true exactly, but.
So the spending plan provides for what we have in the Affordable Housing Trust Fund that has been generated by development. It's not coming out of the coffers of the city taxpayers. It's from developers. So as developers pay their fee, their required fee, it goes into the Affordable Housing Trust Fund. We have to project that out for the next 10 years and develop a spending plan based on that. It also sets aside a maximum of 20% for administrative costs. So like, when I work on your affordable housing plan, that money is usually paid from that fund as opposed to the city's general funds. Okay? So did I answer your question? Okay, thank you.
My real purpose in speaking is directed towards the lease that you're proposing for the Welcome Center with MAC. MAC is a nonprofit, that's acknowledged. But the pattern in the city has been that the, that the nonprofits that rent from the city, they have the obligation to pay for all their expenses. You're deviating from that practice because you're looking to bear, to bear the expenses for MAC with water, sewer, and the electric. And there are some other things that have a monetarius allocation for them. And one is there's four parking spaces that we're giving up to MAC that has, that has a value. Trying to project what these costs might cost the city to have this, this tenant occupy our building for a dollar a year may run over $1,000 a month expense for the city. I don't feel that that's, that's a good practice to get into. You're, you're changing the practices that have been in existence for a long time. And if you open that door, you are now going to be looking for the opportunity for the other nonprofits that participate to, to look to the city for assistance with their expenses. So there's, there are some other idiosyncrasies in the, in the lease where the city has some obligations to maintain to a certain degree. I don't think they're very well-defined because the building, the lease calls for the tenant to accept it in an as-is condition, but that's not necessarily so because further on in the lease, it calls for the city to be obligated to make certain improvements. I think the, the lease should be reconsidered and looked at and followed the pattern that has been in existence for a long time. Nonprofits, they rent for a dollar, but they have the obligation to pay for their expenses.
Okay, so we had a closed session on this, which I'm not going to talk about what exactly was discussed or who said what. But everything you just said was discussed, okay? So that was all part of the discussion and negotiation between two different parties. And you're correct in that we have lease agreements with MAC at the physical estate, and we have the tennis club, we have the nature center, the Audubon. AMA, we had, of course, the Chamber of Commerce in this same building with a dollar. I will, quickly on the parking, I think it was the same with the chamber as it is with MAC. But their staff needs parking to be there, okay? So that, that was the same with the former tenant as it is with the exist, with the new. But here's the, what I see as the difference, and this is what was discussed. They are staffing that building specifically to welcome Cape May guests. Our other alternatives would be basically paying someone to do that, which we felt was a far less of an expense of basically paying the electric bill. Yes, we would pay the sewer to the county, but the water bill is basically us. But understand, those are all real, real things and legitimate, and all things we did discuss. But I will say, the difference that I see between Cape May Stage, I think I forgot to mention them, this is providing a direct service to the Welcome Center that we would have to provide otherwise. And that is the difference that I see.
If I can add to that, the city did something recently, you talked about the cost that might be coming up. The city did something recently that it hasn't done before, which was it leased excess space on another portion of that building at a market rate. So the city is now bringing in revenue that it had never done before, as far as I know, in that building. It's a unique situation, but I think that, that confluence of factors was really what, it's not really an apples-to-apples if you compare them to the nature center in that building because it's a Welcome Center, there's another tenant in there paying market rent, and the reality that the city would have to, or would want to staff it itself if there wasn't somebody in there doing that. So there was a couple of things. And also, I'll point out, you're not seeing like a 50-year term out the gate on this. Both parties want to take a two-year look, two calendar-year look at how this pans out. And then every, both parties, the city and MAC, want to take a look at how that worked out after the first two years and whether any adjustments need to be made.
I understand, but I also know Convention Hall is also a Welcome Center. And that is open to the public for them to, to see exactly what's going on. They make a very nice presentation in the hallway in Convention Hall, so. And, you know, this is a well-located building. It may have a market use that would, should maybe come under consideration.
I agree with you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Stacy Shan, 928 Columbia Avenue. I'm also up here to talk about the lease agreement with MAC. My question is this. When we had the chamber, they paid for the water, sewer, electric. Where now we'll be paying for that. But they also were doing the buses. Are they, is MAC going to be taking over the buses?
Yes, they already are.
So, okay, so in other words, they're profiting, they're profiting from the buses, but yet we're going to be paying water and sewer? That's where I feel that, you know, it's also a very wealthy nonprofit. So for them not to be able to pay for their own utilities and bathroom cleaning, to me, is something that the taxpayers should not be supporting in that we pay taxes not for a nonprofit to grow wealthier and stronger for us to pay their utility bills and for them to profit off of our bus permits. At one time, the bus permits were done right here in City Hall by city workers. And then we, we don't even make anything on it. I think they get 100% of the, of the fee, isn't that correct? Yeah, so they get 100%. Yeah, so they get 100%, which I don't know even is allowed in the government, that they don't, that we don't just get a portion. So that's my comment.
Anyone else?
Roz Johnson, 826 Lafayette Street. My question is for the, Mr. Dietrich, about the Lafayette Hall Park. Where are we? Last time we spoke, you said that.
I'll move this down for you.
Okay, thanks. Last time we spoke, you said there was no movement in work because you were waiting for the pavilion to come? So is there any news on that?
We had met with the contractor, trying to encourage him to get out there. He has not, yep, remobilized, but we're still communicating him on a weekly basis, trying to get him back out to make progress. He has told us that the pavilions won't be shipped to him until the first week in August. So, you know, that's the, I'll say, the out date that we're doing, but we're still trying to get him in before then to try to button up some of this work and get, what he can get opened, opened.
So the, so the timeline maybe is pushed back until the fall?
No, if, if, if they get, take delivery, they'll come in in August and, and do the work once they get the pavilions.
Oh, okay. Okay, thank you. And my second comment is that I got this really nice informative letter from the Public Works about how recycling is done. I think it was an excellent example of communication between city and residents. It was written decisively, it was written in detail, and in a way that I personally could understand. So I appreciate that, and I think it's a good example, like I said, of communication. Did you write it? Oh, no.
No, but thank you for thinking I did. I did write the ordinance, I don't know if that counts.
Well, they were all looking at you.
It needed to be explained.
Anyway, a really good example of communication, because I'm all about communication between the city and its residents. Thank you.
Thank you, Roz. Anyone else wishing to speak this evening, afternoon? Seeing none, we can close public. Thank you, thank you, everyone. Have a wonderful July 4th weekend, stay safe. Thank you.
Thanks.
Time is 4:00 PM.